...stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome and good evening everyone to the April tenth MSD School District Pike Township School Board Meeting. First, we'll start off with the good of the cause. If any Patreons would like to use this platform, you have three minutes. You may start by stating your name.
Good evening President Anderson, members of the school boards and Dr. Young.
Evening.
My name is Ben Church and I'm a teacher at Snacks Crossing. I am extremely proud of the progress that my students have made this year and I'm overwhelmed with joy for their student-led initiative that they have accomplished over the last few weeks. The fifth grade social studies standards are about the US government and US history. Throughout the year, my students have been learning about how the country works and how the people movements that got us to where we are today. On March nineteenth, two of my students used their first amendment rights to protest the government and joined educators at the National Walk-In Rally at Snacks Crossing. Later during my reading group, they told other students why they were protesting. The other students became enraged at the actions of the government and said, "They can't do that. We need our schools to learn so that we can grow up and be successful. We should get students to sign something to say that this is wrong." I informed them that what they were proposing is called a petition, which is another first amendment right, where you gather signatures of people who support your cause and you present it to the government. They immediately wanted to create a petition. My phonics lesson changed from the phonics patterns that they needed for the student-generated petition that they created. I told them that they would need to talk about their goal with Mrs. Jones, the principal, so they had a meeting with her where she challenged them to come up with a plan to execute their idea. They planned to give up their specials time, art, gym and music, and their recess time, to create speeches, make press releases for the morning announcements, design posters to spread their message, and present their petition to every class in the school. I allowed them to use my room during my prep time and I sat at my desk attempting to do work, which was impossible, as I was in awe watching them cook, as they would say. They worked together to execute their plan and the group of students grew each day because they were organizing and recruiting more students. Today, they were able to take a tour at the State House and present their petition to their legislators, Representative Cherish Pryor and Senator J.D. Ford. I am extremely proud of these students. They saw a problem in the world and chose to be brave and bold to make the world a better place for themselves, for their classmates, and for the community. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "A man dies when he refuses to stand up for that which is right. A man dies when he refuses to stand up for justice. A man dies when he refuses to take a stand for that which is true." As adults and leaders in this community, you can be as brave and as bold as these students have been. You can be the light in the darkness. You can be the salt of the earth. You can be the change you wish to see in the world. When you stand up for justice in our society, you can make Pike proud. I ask all of you to join educators from across the state at the State House on Monday from ten o'clock to two o'clock to protest these laws and bills that are being proposed that are going to hurt our district. Please join us at the State House. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Church. Is there anyone else who would like to utilize the platform for the good of the cause? All right, moving on to spotlight on Pike, Ms. Sarah Dorsey.
Good evening. It's wonderful to see you. As always, we've had great things going on in Pike and we have a lot of exciting things coming up. Because there are so many, I'm going to restrain myself just to talking about what's going to happen between now and our next board meeting because otherwise it would just be too much. This Tuesday, our partners at Resilient Pike and some of their supporters visited all of our schools for our annual tree planting. It's one of our favorite activities. It helps our students to understand that they have deep roots in Pike no matter where they go to make a difference in the world. Monday, April fourteenth, which is this coming Monday, our talented students from throughout the school district are going to share their visual and choral arts at an Evening with the Arts, which will be held at Pike High School. It begins at six PM with the art exhibits and a cooking demonstration and samples from a celebrity chef that Chartwell's is bringing in as part of their Global Eats program. And then the Choral Festival portion of our art celebration will begin at seven PM. And there's a lot of cross-level, cross-school collaboration for this event, so it's just very exciting. And our families come out to see and support our students, so if you're able to attend, it is a great event. We want to congratulate Pike High School swimmer Rowan Daisy for getting his first winter junior national cut in the fifty free at the Speedo Sectional, which was held at the IU auditorium on March twenty-seventh. Our sports mental health summit will take place at Pike High School and the main gym on Monday, April twenty-first, and that will be from five to six thirty PM. It will feature Dr. Gary Sales and Daryl Flash Gordon, and the focus will be on mastering mental toughness, what top athletes do. Tuesday, April twenty-second, is going to be a very busy day in Pike. Our Pike High School Performing Arts boosters will proudly present the Red Devil Jazz Cafe at six thirty PM and the Pike Freshman Center Cafeteria. And Pike High School will also be hosting their Earth Day Celebration from four to seven PM, and that event is located behind the high school at our outdoor lab. There'll be fishing, and school clubs will put on activities as well as some community partners. And then last but never least, we'd like to sincerely thank the donors listed on this evening's agenda. An Exceptional Life Financial Teach-Plan-Retire donated a thousand dollars to support our two students who will be competing at the next level for DECA. And then the Assistance League of Indianapolis donated a thousand five hundred dollars in gift cards and food for the Red Devil Food Pantry. Also, the food pantry will be open next Monday, so that's another great thing. That's from four to six.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dorsey. Next, we have reports to the board, facility improvement updates. Mr. Gruber.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young. I'm excited to be here again to talk to you about some things going on in the district. My hope tonight is just to kind of give you an overview of what's going, what has been going on in the district, recently completed projects, projects that are going on right now, as well as projects that we're going to be undertaking this summer. So, just as a recap, some of our recently completed projects are some interior renovations throughout the district. So, at the Performing Arts Center, we've had lighting and sound upgrades. Those sound upgrades are still ongoing. A new carpet in there last summer. At New Augusta South, they got an entire new front office. So, new carpet, wall coverings, just looks beautiful. The auditoriums at New Augusta North, as well as Guyanese Middle School, they needed new carpet, so we went ahead and installed new carpet there. And then, as you know, we've had kind of a two-year phased program for restoring all of the restrooms at the middle schools. And just so that you can kind of get an idea of what we've done, so this is an image of the carpet that we installed. And it's amazing what brand-new carpet can do for a space. The carpet was really getting to the end of life there in the auditorium and it sees a lot of use, and so bringing that carpet back in really brought it back to life. Additionally, these are some screenshots or some images of the new lighting fixtures that have gone on, gone in. It's been a little bit of a work in progress in plotting all of the lights in their new locations and tying them back to the light board, but it's making a huge difference and it's going to make it very user-friendly. So, what we're really excited about is it's going to give our students an opportunity to learn how to do this, rather than kind of having to piecemeal some things together, which was what we were doing before we started any of these upgrades. Then in New Augusta South, as I said, new front office. That included new carpet, wall covering, LED lighting, and it just really brightened the place up. It's so much more welcoming and a lot of compliments from this space. Then at the middle schools, we continue to update those restrooms and also put some new carpet in the auditorium. Just as a point of, to note about the restrooms, and I may have mentioned this in a previous presentation, but we were really fortunate. The integrity of our restrooms were still intact, so the walls were solid, the floors were solid, the ceramic tile was in pretty decent shape. It just looked really, really dated. And so, we were able to save literally millions of dollars not gutting the restrooms, but restoring that tile. And so, what you see there is original tile, but we came in, we repaired any damaged or broken tile, and then they completely encapsulate that tile and seal all of the grout lines, and it's a much more durable surface, solid surface, so there's no more resealing of grout lines. And you can change it to any color, and that's what you see there. So, that blue wall there is old ceramic tile that we've completely encapsulated and changed the color of, giving it a fresh new look.
Want to talk a little bit about the steps on the pitcher farthest to the right?
Yeah.
If you look at the very end with the step down, if it seems a little bit bright, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so that was a challenge that we ran into a year or two ago. It was brought to our attention that we've had unfortunately some slips or some falls in our auditoriums. They're designed in such a way that the space is very versatile, so we can have, you know, large group meetings in there. You can set it up in an auditorium style like it is now if you have to feed kids in there. So, there's not railings at every step, but unfortunately, when you dim the lights during a program, it at times is difficult to see where that step is, and unfortunately, we had a few people get injured there. So, we were brainstorming ideas of, well, what do we do to make that more visible? And this was a solution that Dr. Young and I came up with, is that we would put this bright nose on the steps so that it's very, very visible. And this is a rubber composite material, which is really helpful for us so that if we are having an event and we are dimming the lights, if we needed to, we could add a caution tape to it and then pull it up after the presentation, clean that floor up, and you'll never know it was there. So, we can add additional safety features when we're having an event if we still feel like we need to go a little bit further with the safety. So, some additional recently completed projects, and these are kind of the behind-the-scenes, the things that people don't see as much. We put in a new HVAC system in our district data center. We did some roof repairs at Guyanese Middle School. We added additional draining to the Lincoln Middle School baseball field and did some mechanical yard improvements at the high school. These mechanical yard improvements, to a lot of people, it's like, eh, that's not a big deal. You added some concrete and a fence. But this has completely changed the way we receive deliveries at the high school. It greatly improved the amount of, or reduced the amount of time that our pony driver is there. He can get in, get out a lot faster. But the main purpose for this is we know coming down the road, we have to replace the generator at the high school. It is nearing the end of its life and we're going to have to replace that. And the way that the mechanical yard was previously set up would not have allowed us to get a generator in there. The concrete path was not wide enough, and so to kind of defray the cost of putting that new generator in down the road, we had an opportunity to improve that mechanical yard now and kind of future-proof it if we have any transformers that go bad, pumps that go bad on the cooling towers that are in there, and then ultimately to replace that generator.
Mr. Gruber?
Yes.
One question. Is it for the high school, is it just one generator or two backup?
No. No, so we have one generator, well, yes, one generator for the entire high school, and then we have one generator just for the data center. One of the things that we have to look at when we replace that generator for the high school is what systems are currently tied into that generator. So, for a lot of our buildings that have been around, right around that twenty, twenty-five year mark, most of our generators are supporting a few emergency lights and then our coolers and our freezers in our kitchens. And we want to go a step further. We want to make sure that we have lighting throughout the building. We want to ensure that if the power does go down for an extended period of time, that we can still function as a school and at least get through the school day. And then we can assess at the end of the day, was this going to be a long-term outage? Do we need to reassess for tomorrow? But at least we're not sending kids home midday because that's a difficult task for any school district to take care of. So, that's one of the things we have to look at. The generator that's there right now has capacity to take on more, but it already has so many years of life to it that we would want to upgrade the generator and then tie in more systems to it.
Answers my question. My next question, the other ones I didn't know I was going to ask. Thank you.
We also did some restoration to the track. We brought a company in and they completely restored it. We had found some damage that had happened over winter that was a little more severe than we anticipated. This project wasn't supposed to take place for another year or two, but Pike is known for its track. People love coming here. We host some massive invitationals. And in talking with the ADs, we had a real concern that maybe one or two of our lanes weren't going to be usable. And so, we reached out to a local company and they put together a package for us, and Dr. Young said, "Yes, let's get it done so that we have a safe track, a fast track, and a place where kids want to come and compete." And then lastly, I know this does not get anybody excited, but a little bit of rip rap every now and then, that's beautiful, right? So, that's drainage on the baseball field. Years ago, when they put that concrete wall in, it was to retain the soil, right? To make sure the field stays level over time, because just behind that is the creek that runs through the property. And to prevent any future erosion of the field, they put in this concrete barrier, what they didn't add was any type of drainage. So, it is essentially like a giant bathtub, and it would just become saturated and it wouldn't drain. So, we went ahead and added drainage along that concrete wall to get that moisture out of the soil as quick as we can. Now, projects in progress right now. This one, I am just super excited about. Every time I go over there, something new has happened at Deer Run, and the school is buzzing. They are really excited about it. So, what I've got here, just some images. We have now completed the fifth grade and the fourth grade pods. Over spring break, we did a little bit of work in the cafeteria, as well as the music and art room, and they're currently working in the third grade pod. There are still a little, a few components in each pod that haven't been a hundred percent completed. We have a graphics wall that's coming in that is just going to be awesome. There's some other accent pieces that haven't arrived just yet, and we're going to button all of that up in the summer and in the early fall. But we've got these different themes, right? These color themes. So, each grade level is going to have a designated color, and we use that color throughout for the accents walls. You see it in the carpet. And man, it is just, it's beautiful. Another project that we've come to you before and we've talked about and has been brought to, brought up from members of the board, is our signs. These signs, I'll be honest with you, these sign projects have been difficult.
I'm glad you said that.
So, first and foremost, the digital signs were no easy hurdle. We had to go through a variance process, and just so that you're aware, the current policies, as they're written in Indianapolis, do not allow it at all, period. So, the committee that we went and presented to had to vote against their own policies in order for us to have these. And so that was a lengthy process. Once we finally got the green light, I was really excited, but as I've talked to different sign installers, many of them don't like to do work in the winter months when you have freezing ground. So, we've had to wait until spring, and this spring, although we've had a couple, we had that one really warm week, we've had really cold nights, and that's been a problem for us. Even this week, we had, you know, nights in the twenties. But we're looking to start these projects in the next week or two, so you'll see construction on the signs at the New Augusta campuses, and then those four locations, which include College Park, the sign right out here on Seventy-first Street, the one right down here on Zionsville in front of the Performing Arts Center, and then by Snacks Crossing. And then we have four other signs in the district that we have to go back through the variance process, but they're currently too close to the road. When the signs were originally put in, the right-of-way was further away from the property line, and since they've changed the right-of-way because they're thinking of expanding some of those thoroughfares, we now have to move the signs back before we can get any chance for a variance there. So, planned projects, projects that we're going to be doing this summer. The baseball and softball field renovations, that include new turf, fencing, and that's going to be, I've got an image here that I'm going to show you. I'm really excited about that. Additional track restorations, particularly at our middle schools. Lincoln Middle School is in dire need of a track restoration there, but New Augusta North can use some refurbishments, and we're going to do Guyanese Creek at the same time. We got fence repair district-wide. A lot of our fences are as old as the buildings. We also sustained some damage in the storms last week, so this fencing budget is going to be really helpful for us over the summer. Here on main campus, we're going to replace some of the ticket booths and storage sheds that are on our facilities and support our athletic programs. And then we also got some roof replacements, and these are big roof jobs. So, Fishback is getting a steel roof. Deer Run is getting another shingled roof, and then they also have some flat EPDM above the cafeteria and kitchen area, and then Snacks Crossing as well is getting a metal roof. And lastly, the corridor renovations at the middle schools. This is where we're going to go in, remove that old VCT, repair some of the waviness that we have in the floor from the original construction as the building settled, some cracking that we had. So, we're going to repair all of that and then put new LVT in right on top of that. And we're going to integrate some colors from the school that I'll show you here in a minute. So, just a quick snapshot, a rendering of the fields. So, this is what the turf is actually going to look like. So, going to have the beautiful logo out there in center field, Pike Proud down each of the first and third baselines. And this is going to be a completely flat field. So, we are going to have a removable mound, so that if we choose to, we can take other organizations out there, other teams out there, and they can use the facility in other seasons if we need to as well. Now, with the no-contact rules where we have teams practicing all year long, this is going to become a really great place for us. But more than anything, our teams are going to be able to get out there and have real practice before games. In the four years that I've been here, we've had at least two seasons where our kids haven't played a single scrimmage on these fields or a practice before the first game, because it's just been too wet. And that will not be a problem anymore. On January fifth, if the sun is out, they can be out on those fields because they're going to be playable. Guyanese Creek Middle School, I shared this with you when I brought the bid package to you, but just as an overview, this is kind of the work area that we're looking at. As you can see, all of the main corridors down to the academic wings. Guyanese Creek Middle School, we're going to spend some time in their cafeteria. Their cafeteria floor is dated and needs some work. And then on the left side of the screen there, this is the part I'm really excited about, is around the athletic areas, the gyms, we're going to do some, oh darn, I forgot the word. Oh, this has never happened to me.
This is going to be worse.
Branding. So, we're going to take, so the team or the colors, the school colors, and we're going to incorporate them into the floor and into the work that we have in that area. Lincoln Middle School as well. So, we're going to do new cafeteria floor in there throughout. As you see in all three of these, we're not doing anything in the main lobbies of those, of Lincoln Middle School or New Augusta North, because they have some beautiful ceramic tile in there that is aging just fine. And then lastly, New Augusta North, once again, we'll do some branding of the Phoenix down by the athletic facilities and the gymnasiums to really, really make it pop. Lastly, some additional planned projects, and these ones, once again, are kind of behind the scenes, not super exciting, but things that we do on an annual basis. We will do summer painting throughout the district. We'll do parking lot repairs where we do some seal coating, repaint, restriping of lines and fire lanes and all of that. Gym floor resurfacing, all of our wood floors will be resurfaced this summer. Tile and grout restoration in restrooms, and then summer cleaning that we've got going on. So, that sums up my presentation this evening. Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I noticed that the corridors, bathrooms, and other things were being covered. What about the locker rooms at the middle school? Is that something in the future?
Yeah, so I feel like the middle schools, we've just taken this approach. We're going to do a little bit at a time and do all three of them. What we want to ensure is that regardless of where our kids go, they're having a great experience. And because there's three middle schools, we feel like we can adequately achieve that. It'd be much harder at an elementary level. We can't update nine elementary schools all at the same time.
Right.
But at our middle schools, we can. So, regardless of what elementary school these kids are coming from, they're going into an environment that is just fantastic. And their experience is not going to be different from New Augusta North to Guyanese Middle School to Lincoln Middle School. So, yes, the, kind of the next phase is that we will look at is locker rooms, and then we'll move into classrooms as well. Those classrooms will need to be updated.
And we'll also do our spring walkthrough, so we'll make sure we get a chance to look at those during our spring walkthrough as well.
So, I would ask also, in the bleachers over at the high school, we need to look at those too, because those are pretty, pretty bad.
I apologize. I didn't include that on the list. That's being done this summer.
Okay.
So, we've got new bleachers coming in, and we have a new gym floor going in in the main highs, in the main gym.
Thank you.
Well, that was my, that was my question there, because we talked about that.
We did, yes.
So, thank you very much for that. Just a complimentary comment, very thorough and detailed report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did, one, I love seeing all the stuff you're doing at the middle schools. That was where I've been for years, you know, helping out with stuff, and so I love seeing them get the refresh. I especially appreciate the lights, what the stuff you're putting at the end of the steps. I have turned my ankle more than once in the Guyanese and the Napa Middle Schools, so yeah, so that's very appreciative. And, you know, my heart is with the softball stuff, so I am excited to see the stuff that's going on with the softball field out there, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, it makes us feel good because we get community complaints and everything else about, about some stuff. So, it makes us really feel good that, that we see really stuff happening, so.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our action items. Action item A, minutes of the Board of Education Public Hearing in regular meeting, March twenty-seventh.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second, Mr. President. Are there any questions or comments? Now, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our human resource report. Dr. Hunter, due to the sensitivity of the report, we won't entertain any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, Dr. Young, I ask that you approve the HR report as presented.
So, move.
Second.
Have a first and a second. We'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Thank you.
Next, we have request approval to apply for the Twenty-First Century Cohort Thirteen Grant. Ms. Hardeman.
Hi, good evening, Board President, members of the board, Dr. Young. I am here this evening requesting your approval to apply for the Twenty-First Century Cohort Thirteen Grant.
So, move.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Are there any questions or comments? No questions or comments, we'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have approval for new health education textbooks. Mr. Enman.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young, seeking approval for action item B, approval of a new health textbook at Pike High School as presented.
So, move.
Second.
First and a second. Are there any questions or comments? I just have a question. So, you know, we have to be careful with books that we let into the district these days. Did this book go through a committee on, to verify the type of topics, because we don't have it in front of us, but if there are any, you know, the new age type of topics that we have to deal with now?
Yes, it went through a committee and it applies, that follows all state guidelines and board policies.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? We'll move on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Enman. Next, I would like to combine actions items E and F, contracts, donations, and crowdfunding. Mr. Foster.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Young. I recommend approval of the contracts and donations. Recommend approval as presented.
So, move.
Second.
So, we have a first and a second on action items E and F. Also the same, are there any questions or comments? We'll move on to vote. All in favor for action items E and F, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Lastly, we have board member items. Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy to see, didn't get a chance to see you in the last meeting, Dr. Hunter, and also happy to see Sister Dorsey back tonight and her loss, and want to know that we're praying for both of you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Ms. Wilson.
Just want to say again, we're glad to have Dr. Hunter back and Ms. Dorsey and what you went through. Everything I've heard today has been great. Mr. Gruber, you put such a good plan together. I was ever to follow you, so I appreciate that. And just want you guys to make sure that you go to the State House and make yourself presence known, because we're going through some times where if we don't, we're going to be even madder than we are right now. So, we need to start getting our voices heard everywhere we go. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Hooper.
All right, so, one, I apologize for my voice. You have to listen to. It's been a bit strange. But the, I just had a great time the last weekend. I've got, had the chance to go to the NSBA Conference down in Atlanta, and along with just having a good time there, getting to hang out with Ms. Barnes some at the, at the conference, learned volumes and looking forward already to attending next year in San Antonio. So, a great learning opportunity. Had a great time at the orchestra concert at the high school the other night. Got to see two of my former players playing violin in the different orchestras, so got to be a little bit of a proud moment there. And then, as already mentioned, the Resilient Pike tree planting, that was an honor to get to attend. And Mr. Church, thank And Mr. Church, thank you for the things you're teaching your students. I love to see that activism, as Ms. Wilson said, speak up, speak out for public education. There's a lot going on down at the State House. It's often not looking great for us, and I just hope that everybody, regardless of what side of the aisle they sit on, looks at all of this and considers their votes when they're voting in each election, that all of these things really matter, and many times our local elections matter more than the national sometimes, so I just hope people really start taking that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Dr. Webster.
I am a D.
Thank you. Mrs. Barnes.
I'd like to echo Mr. Hooper. Thank you so much, community, for allowing us to get trained at the National School Board Association Conference. I learned so very much in the different sessions, and I look forward to sharing that with my fellow board members here in the next coming weeks. Also, I had a chance to network with other school board members around the country and even one in Canada, and so that was a real illuminating experience for me as one of your leaders here on this board, and I look forward to certainly implement the things that I've learned and most definitely share it with my fellow board members.
Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Ms. Cully.
Good evening. Welcome back from break, everybody. We're hoping was able to rest and refresh. You all know my spiel, but I cannot emphasize enough the importance of taking care of yourself, your health, your mental and physical health. We want our Pike family to remain strong, and we can't be Pike proud without everybody being strong and healthy and taking care of themselves. And the adults cannot take care of children and students when we're not well, and we're not taken care of, so making sure we are availing ourselves of all resources we have to care for ourselves. And looking to finish this year, school year strong.
Thank you, Mrs. Cully. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to share that I know at times we look at what's happening locally at state level, even nationally, and sometimes it's disheartening for us, but we're all here, educators and board members, because we believe that investing in our children is the best investment that we can make for our future. And even though we have a state curriculum, district curriculum, and things that we have to teach, and to be quite honest, we'll be held accountable for our children showing a level of mastery. I still also believe that there's space, that when our children express an interest, that we can provide them that space and that opportunity. So, I'm glad and I'm thankful to Mr. Church that when his children express an interest and wanted to learn more about advocating and what that process looks like, that as an educator, we were able to provide that opportunity and some guidance for them to practice that skill, because for all the things that we want to see change in, I truly believe that, you know, this next generation, if we equip them with skills, they can make this world a whole lot better than what we pass on to them. I would also just want to remind the board, and I'll share some more information with some additional dates and times tomorrow about the Evening with Artists on Monday. So, we'll be celebrating the performing arts, the fine arts, which we've done years ago, but also this year, we're adding the culinary arts, and we'll even have a celebrity chef here at ASC as well, so look out for that information. Love to have you join us.
Thank you, Dr. Young. In closing, again, thank you, Mr. Gruber, for the, your reports are always engaging in very detail, so thank you very much, and helps us with complaints, so now, you know, everyone notices things that's wrong, and I say, it's all over. So, thanks again. Also, to Mr. Church, your, what you're doing with your students, that starts the, a generation of voters who understand why it's important to vote and understand why they're voting and, you know, understand the political climate, because that's what we need, that's what we have to produce, and Pike is, you know, I hope that Pike stays a leader in that, and also everyone on north preaching to the choir, but yes, get down to the State Building and advocate for our interests. Also, I see Mr. Hollis here, thank you very much, the transportation department runs smoothly. I just don't really hear anything, so thank you for the work and your staff is doing over there. With that being said, if I could get a motion to close the meeting. So, move, brother president.
Second.
Good evening, everyone.